Let's, at six o'clock, let's go ahead and call to order the city council business meeting of May 14, 2024. Are we unmuted and everything's recording and good to go?
Yes.
All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, unified by the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I start with a roll call of officers?
Westwood?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Keith?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, or this is council's opportunity to make any modifications to the agenda? If there's anything on the agenda that council would like to have not on the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda, or adopt the agenda, as written.
I second.
Have a motion by council member Ronnie, and seconded by council member Conley. Didn't make my cheat sheet, Daniel.
I'm going to change.
Any, any discussion? All right. Let's have a roll call.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Here.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
That could have been the spot where you took it off, I'm just saying. All right. I will entertain a motion or motions to approve the minutes of previous meetings. However, that would like to be presented by the presenter.
I move to adopt the, or to approve the minutes of the April 9th, 23rd, and 30th meeting.
I second.
All right. There's a motion to approve all sets of minutes as presented by council member Conley, and a second by council member Ronnie. Is there any discussion? This is your opportunity to identify changes or things that you think are inadequate in the minutes. Hearing no discussion, can I get a roll call?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to start the discussion regarding warrants payable.
I move to approve warrants payable of $588,998.13.
And I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by member, council member Keith, and a second by council member Toopin.
That's right.
And I just wanted to point out some of the cash outlays for this one. $319,000 roughly was for a bond payment for water. $90,000 was to Great West Engineers fees. $45,000 was to Republic Services, and $25,000 for the Arbor Day Trees to Baldwin. So, and then from there on it went down.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a clarification. Is this all checks written, or are there credit cards payments in here as well?
So they're all checks. There is a MasterCard that we, that were, that's in there, that has the charges on there, but then you write the check to pay off.
Right, sure, sure. But we're getting the proper approval and receipts and invoices and everything on the credit cards?
Yes.
Pretty well outlined.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions, comments, or input?
The only input I put on that is the funds used for the trees that have been reimbursed back from the Arbor Day donations.
All right. Thank you for the Parks Board on their effort on, on helping get those in. All right. If there's no further discussion, it's a roll call vote.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. With your blessing up then, I will finish executing checks tomorrow, and we'll make sure that we get those paid in accordance with council's direction. All right. So for mayor's reports and comments in business, the first thing I want to call out, in the paper, we identified an error that we had said the, that the 40K, 400K, that was in regard to the street addressing. So we had, we had provided a typo in the information that said there had been 400,000 set aside. That is only 40,000 that has been aside, set aside, and been moving forward for that project. So that is a typo on our side, so we'll accept that, and at the same time, we're letting that information, giving that information out via here. From a citywide standpoint, informational for the public, the, on the primary ballot, there will be an initiative that is to form a study commission. This is something that was passed, a resolution that was passed by council. It's actually a statutory requirement, so that every 10 years, what has happened is we proposed to the voters, whether we want to form a commission to reevaluate and change our form of government. We have to reevaluate it every 10 years. When they did our constitution in 1972, they built that right into it. Every 10 years, we're going to renew and say, are we good with this, or do we want to change that? From a city position, our information, our role is informational only. I will work to get some information posted up on our website. I hope to do that today. I did not succeed in doing that, but we will get that online if there are questions. I am happy to address that. I think any of the member of councils can address that. Basically, what we're going to do is we're going to put you in, in touch with links, and also some pre-recorded meetings that were put out on the process. But again, from a city standpoint, what we're providing is informational. We do not have a position on it. If the voters approve it and pass it, then what will happen is on the November election, people will sign up and basically run to be on that panel. That then takes the next couple of years to form a recommendation for the city about what to do going forward. And then that result, that recommendation is then voted on by the voters in a couple of years. Council, is there anything that you can think of that you want me to add to that as far as clarity or questions?
Specifically, I think it's just important to recognize that there has been conversation that some folks in the community do want a city manager. This would be the course to do that.
Other comments or questions?
Everybody should have their ballots in the mail already.
Yeah. My understanding is they've mailed, they were mailed day before yesterday. I've not received mine yet, but I haven't been to the post office.
I received mine today.
All right. The other two things are budget. I attended a conference last week. I did not get what I had hoped to get out of that budget conference. However, we are still forging forward. It is my anticipation that we will still come with a temporary budget at the next meeting in line with the resolution that we passed. Just so that you guys know a little bit about what to expect on that, we have started with last year's numbers. We have bumped the salary numbers in accordance to what the department head requests are, so basically cost of living. The problem that we have is, as you guys know, COLA at this point is going up at a fairly accelerated rate. The challenge is that municipalities within the state of Montana are limited at one half of the COLA over the last three years. So you can do the first part of the math that's there. So in that first budget that we are presenting, we're basically building that in. It is anticipated that that is a draft budget. It is not a final budget, AKA, I will tell you right now, it's going to come in at more than what we anticipate our revenues to be. So from there, we will say, if we meet those salaries, how do we make it work, and how do we fix, and how do we adjust that? But I will, we will have that to you, as well as a schedule of when the department heads are going to come and do their presentations at the next meeting. By the way, that, kind of the presentation that the department heads are working on includes, these are the services that we are able to provide for the amount of money that has been allocated. Here's what we would provide if we had more money. These are the things we'd like to be able to provide. And here's where we'll have to cut fees if we don't get the budget that we are asking for. So then you guys, the council, can then make those policy decisions, or guidance about where it is. And then I will present a budget which you ultimately will approve, and have them put on. Questions or comments on that? All right. The other final piece I'd like to share with you is regarding the airport. Jody and I were not successful in getting our schedules to align last week. We tried, and things go wrong. We are set to do that this week. We are basically comparing the multiple different versions of the document. Part of the intent to have that done is there is a meeting on the 21st. It is not a public meeting. It is a meeting, we will, I will be present. The FAA is coming down. The airport, and basically what we're going to be talking about is what do we need to have our, get our public meetings out there for folks, and have them look at our agreement and see if there are any concerns. So the goal is to have that done, so that they can offer their input or concerns before we bring that to council for action as well. So by the time it comes to us, we will have a representative of council that says we're in line. And again, we'll bring it to the, to the next meeting for you guys to look at. But at that point, it will also have been through the county. It will also have been through the FAA, guidance and overview. Questions or comments on that?
Those are all the people that need to look at it?
Well, ultimately, you all need to look at it, but I will, I will run. Yeah.
Because the next meeting is the 28th, and our resolution ends on the 30th. Isn't it May 30th?
Yeah, the current is, is through that. So that, if, if, if everything is, and by the way, as soon as we get through, I will blast, not discussion, but blast out, here's where we settled on. And again, that's with a representative of council. You guys have the ability to work as a, as a standing committee if there's tweaks or changes between now and the next meeting. But given the timeline, I think where you're going is, is we'd like to have that for action up at the next meeting. And so whatever I can do to help get you guys that information available before that. And, and again, that's procedurally, so we don't have to just extend. But the goal of everybody is to have this done before the end of June, and end of May is just as good as end of June. So let's go ahead and go with that. Did I, did I understand the question, and did that address it?
Yes, yes.
All right. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for me from the council? All right.
I actually have one. Do you have any, I, I get this question asked a lot. Any updates on the batched-in property?
Yes. I, so this is on the Rocky Ford Inn. So an update on that. The decision was made previously or at the beginning of the year that we were not going to spend any citizen, City of Red Lodge tax dollars on the acquisition of the property. And so what would happen is it was determined that what would happen is they would accept 75% of the FEMA. The problem is when the application was initially submitted, it was submitted with in mind of thinking that the city was going to have to come up with 25% of whatever we asked for, rather than having the, the property owners write it off. So the ask was about half of what it really could have slash should have been. And so in the, the agreement concession, however you want to phrase it, was in their accepting such 75% of the FEMA, that we were updating the application with the amount that should have been included the first time. That has been, there's been, we first validated that the additional funds were available. There was another property that failed through, so they confirmed that those funds are available. We have submitted an amended application offer. Our original goal is we were hope that that was going to be a closing by the end of April. The federal government is involved, if that answers that question. However, having said that, at this point, with the transition from our current planner to the new planner, it is on a weekly touch list that we touch base with on a weekly basis, and the goal is to get that resolved as quickly as possible. So that was updated with a, with an updated amended application based on 75% of what the appraisal is. And then when we get to that point, that will come to the council for approval. At that point, the city may get involved as needed. We have primarily state funds for the reclamation of the property. And anything that the city needs to come with, and at that point in time, then that will come to the council to approve that. We have different resources available, including resort tax. But the difference at that point is it's not going in the pockets of a victim X or a victim Y. The first part of that conversation when it came to the acquisition is that we had so many people impacted by the flood. There was no good way, there was no, there was no right way to have the conversation of some tax dollars are going to help victim X, but not victim Y. So the decision was, no tax dollars will go into the pockets of any of the impacted property owners. Those who wish to pursue FEMA, we will assist in that process. And then once that property is acquired by the city, then we will continue those conversations from that point. Did I understand the question properly?
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, and if you have, I mean.
I will, I will put that as a standing up there.
Yeah, keep that as a standard, yeah.
The city can know when it's going to close.
And did you get more information on the Eagle's Nest, whether or not they have?
So the conversation with the Eagle's Nest was identical to the conversation that I just described. We outlined what the parameters would be. That property indicated that he was interested in pursuing it. At that point, we were working with the State Department. I'm remembering the person's name right now, but, no, it was, it was, I was going to, I was not going to say J.C., but it was, it was the, the State Department, that's kind of the reclamation side, had reached out to Sean, who is the property owner, to start that process, and we have not got a response yet. Our planner has been informed, that's Project B. But what I'm trying not to do is pin it until we get the other property done. We, we, we have made ourselves available to help with the other, but we're not actively putting resources to helping push that through just because we've got one that's sitting on the finish line first.
Is there a deadline?
There is. It's toward the end of the season. I mean, we're in a budget cycle, so there is a deadline, and he is aware of that. I, I can't tell you what that is off the top of my head right now. It just, it just opened, and it's a few months.
Well, I'm more concerned that it's been two years come June.
Oh, you're talking about the, so this is a new funding cycle on the Eagle's Nest?
Yeah.
So this just started, like, like started two weeks ago.
Even though the floods happened two years ago, he can still apply?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that question. And I will add that as a regular, as a regular update item. Hopefully, the next time I will say, um, the closing date is. But, but we have that set up for basically a weekly touch call to follow through and do that. One of, one of the benefits of, of the new planner that we've selected is that they work regularly with those folks at the state level. So I'm hoping that will help us get it through. They're used to bugging each other and not taking offense at it. All right. At this point, what we'll do is we will open up public comment. So this will be for public comment on anything on the agenda. This is a three-minute limitation. If, if it's something that's not on the agenda, please know that there will be another public comment at the end of the agenda for anything within the city's purview. So we'll go ahead and open it that. And again, this is not public discussion, public debate, public, this is just an option for public comment, just to manage expectations. I'll go ahead and open public comment at this time, and I'll start with those in the chambers. If there's anybody who's interested, if you'd please step up to the podium and state your name, and direct all comments toward me at the chair, just to help us maintain order.
Point of order, is this public comment for all resolutions that are listed, or will any of those resolutions have public comment individually?
This is public comment for anything on the agenda at this point in time. However, I reserve the right to respect and open it up on a, on a per-agenda item as may be appropriate for the action items. Did I understand the question properly? Does that help?
I believe you did. I think the only question would be, is the answer is, are you going to open it up or not? You, you reserve right, but I don't know that you will.
How about this? This is a public comment for anything on the agenda. If any of the one, two, three, four agenda items that come up, I will make available for agenda. So, so, so I will provide an additional public comment to each agenda item on the, each action item on the agenda, just to make sure that we have public comments available for those. However, you may choose to comment on anything on the action item at this time. Going twice in the room, going to online. If you're online, if you could turn on your camera to indicate you'd like to speak. Going twice, going three times, so I will close that public comment. And again, I have made the decision that I will open public comment on a per-agenda item for those to make sure that folks are able to speak in the proximity of. With that, I will accept a motion regarding Resolution 3650.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3650 to adopt the PER for wastewater system. I second.
I have a motion from council members. Daniels, and a second by council member Conley. I was going to make a cheat sheet for me. I just left it home. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion?
A copy of it, we, we had, we went to the presentation the other night's public hearing, and a copy of that presentation is in the packet, if anyone didn't get a chance to be there or review it. And also the entire PER is on the site.
And for those who didn't hear that, in addition to being in the packet, the full PER has the link on the website that is available. I will turn the time over for just a couple of minutes to our contract engineer. Would you like to add two minutes of conversation, just for awareness?
So in a nutshell, the wastewater PER, we did it two years ago, and we successfully applied for grants for Phase 1 and the design of Phase 2. This is an update to the PER, so we keep the momentum going. It would hopefully be turned around and utilized for the RRGL and MSEP grants again this spring, which are due tomorrow and next week. And that, the proposed project is the construction of Phase 2 and the design and construction of Phase 3, which is based on the priorities of Mike and his crew when we sat down with them. They've got several areas with combined sewer services to back up regularly. We've got a lot of infiltration, so we're starting to try and chip away at the collection system and leverage the city's reserves you've built up with the grants that are available to, you know, essentially double the size of the projects that we can get done. So that's the plan. And with Mike coming on board, you want to continue kind of the plan Jim laid out, the phase it every two years, so that's where we're at.
All right. Is there any comment from the table? All right. This time I'll open up for public comment specifically regarding Resolution 3650, which is to adopt the PER for the wastewater system. First in the room, next online. Jeremy, I do see not a mute button. Is, is there a request to speak, sir? Or just an unawareness of mute button? Going twice, going three times. We'll close the public discussion. Back to the table. Any further comment? All right. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I will entertain a motion regarding Resolution 3651.
I move to approve Resolution 3651, a resolution of the City of Red Lodge to authorize submission of MCEP application.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion from council member Conley, and a second from council member Daniels. Discussion at the table, please.
The next step?
All right. So, so again, to our, to our contract engineer, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
So, based on the recommendations in the PER, the proposed project, like I mentioned, would be the construction of Phase 2, designing construction of Phase 3. Project estimates about $2 million, a little over $2 million. The proposed funding package, looking at all the available grants, was a half a million dollar grant from the Montana Coal Endowment Program, that's the MSEP one. They do require a resolution that the city commits the matching funds or the package. We're also looking at $125,000 grant from the Renewable Resources Grant Loan Program through the DNRC. Monty and Mike sat down, and the city can put half a million dollars of reserves from the Sewer Enterprise Fund towards the project. And then the rest would be a combination of an SRF loan, an SRF loan forgiveness. And given that the city refinanced several of their loans on the Sewer Enterprise Fund a few years ago, you have sufficient debt capacity in there that there's no rate increase required for that loan. So the project package, we can move forward, no rate increase, and everything falls right in place, hopefully.
Questions for our engineer from council?
So I hear no rate increase, so that means no add-on to water bills, sewer bills, anything like that?
Nope. Not, not in regards to this project.
This project does not result in any rating.
Thank you.
We have sufficient rates to already.
Proper planning. All right. Any other input from the table before I go to the public? All right. I'll open for public comment specifically regarding Resolution 3651. First to the room. Next to online, this is regarding Resolution 3651, authorizing submission of the MSEP application. Going twice, going three times. I'll bring it back to the table. Any further comments from the table before we take a vote? Roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Toopin?
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion regarding Resolution 3649.
I move to approve Resolution 3649, a resolution of the City Council of Red Lodge, Montana, to vacate a portion of Daly Avenue right-of-way that is located east of Block 4 and 5, of Block 45, Red Lodge Original Town Site, Section 27, Township 7 South, Range 20 East, CMN, Carbon County, Montana.
I have a motion from council member Conley, and a second by council member Daniels. At this point, we will start with discussion at the table, and then I will just add, and, and as soon as, if somebody wants to introduce it, I do have staff available to speak, so I don't have to speak for them. But questions from the table, or anybody who'd like to open up conversation before we go to outside staff input?
So I know that last time, can we start with staff input and then ask questions?
Absolutely, as the council is retired.
Yeah, I would prefer to have that.
All right. I will, I will start with who is not here. So we have a staff report that was prepared by Cody Markser that was in your packet. In short, it says, listen to your city attorney. I reached out to our second planner to see if they were available to join this meeting. His input was, I've read the previous staff report. My input remains the same. Listen to your city attorney. And with that, I have asked, based on conversation last time, I've asked our city attorney to be present tonight. And, and so we started him. And by the way of information, we also have the applicant who is here, and I have indicated to them I would provide time on the, on the program, I don't want to say program, what's the, on the agenda, if they were. And, and by the way, just, just by way of information, staff by way of information, staff and the applicant are not bound by the three-minute requirements that the public is bound to. So at this time, Mr. Dennison, if you would like to stand and address council, please. And the tricky part is, is if you have questions, you're supposed to address them to me, but he's listening, just saying.
Okay.
I don't make the rules, I just try to facilitate them.
Very members of the city council, I'm glad to be here. As always, my door is always open, you can always come and ask any questions anytime. I can come to any committee meetings, or I can be here anytime you guys would like. Do you have any questions? I have a tendency to give people the long answer instead of a short answer. I have a better slideshow presentation, if you want to jump into that, but I'm here for questions.
Start with the slideshow.
It's good, I spent a lot of time on it.
On the direction I came at him.
I put a lot of time on it, I don't know if it's good or not.
I think the biggest question we really had is, once the land has been eroded by, and removed by the water, and it's been rebuilt, whether the adjacent property owner spends the time and money to rebuild it, or whether the city rebuilt it, who now owns it?
That is a fantastic question. I can jump directly to that point, or I can go through the whole thing, it's up to you guys.
Go through the whole thing.
Okay. This is gonna be, this is gonna be the long answer to the question. But I do think, I always think background is important. It's very simple, the law says that the state of Montana holds title to anything under the highest tide, the high-water mark. Between the low-water mark and the low-water mark and any type of navigable waterway, the state school trust lands hold title. And then between the low-water mark and the high-water mark is, but colloquially it's called an angler's easement, a fisherman's easement, that's held by the state. So any type of navigable waterway, and we can go into a bit more, but a navigable waterway is one that is available for commerce, not a small stream, but a larger river. And there's a lot of tests, and we can go through that. Specifically, some of the tests are back east, a lot of the tests were steamboat tests. In this side of the United States, the test where the Supreme Court has used is log floating tests, that's available for commerce. The Department of Natural Resources and Conservation has declared that this is a navigable waterway. And so Rock Creek, at least according to the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, is a navigable waterway based on a, there used to be a flume and a log cutting place down here, and they used to float logs down here. And that's why the Department of Revenue, or, I'm sorry, Department of Natural Resources, considers this a navigable waterway, and so that's what I'll talk about going forward. So between the low-water mark and high-water mark, and a navigable waterway, which this is, anybody can go through. If there's an easement on it, nobody can shut off anybody's access. Do you want to go on to the next slide? Ownership of these type of landforms are dependent on how the land is formed over time, so it's not in existence. Specifically, when you look at landforms, a lot of it depends on how it's formed literally 100 years ago, to look at ownership back in when statehood was. So a lot of times they'll look for inactive channels, ocular shades, things like that. Next slide, please. And does it matter, this is just, and this slide and next slide is, I think, important for people to realize. If you look at this slide, permission to remove, move it out, by the way?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Use the court. So this is a active riverbed in 1883, this is the active riverbed in 1910, and then this is the active riverbed in aerial photo of a 1938. And you can see throughout these timeframes, very short timeframes, they can move football fields in length. Rivers move a lot, depending on where they are and where they're bound. Do you want to go to the next slide? This is another, just, this is actually the same river, the same case in a different location, but it also highlights the different issues. This is a 1956, 1955 aerial photos, and when you superimpose them, you can see the 1956 riverbed expanded greatly out this way, probably due to a flooding event, and so that's about a nine-year difference, and it's changed significantly. Want to go to the next? Landowners gain land through accretion, and they lose land through erosion. And this is very simple and straightforward. So if you want to go back one slide? These landowners lost this land, they just lost it. And then if you go, not so much here, but in some of the photos, you can see how the riverbed has changed this way. These are accretions on this side, and this landowner gained this land. Now, the interesting part is this island seat in the middle, this was an in-stream island form that formed through accretions, for a different topic, but moral story is the active channel. The Montana Supreme Court has determined that the active channel is owned by the state of Montana. And that includes not only the subsurface rights, but also the subsurface rights, the mineral states, the pore states, and also the airspace. Why? It's just what the Montana Supreme Court has determined, that the active channel in any navigable waterway is owned by the state of Montana. Between low-water mark and low-water mark, it's held by the state school trust lands, and then high-water mark and high-water mark, it's just owned by the state of Montana in general, we may get into that, but that's the way to do it. Want to go to the next slide? Two slides. And this is just going through it little by little. Erosion, yeah, that's erosion, erosion is the cutting into the bank on the far side. Usually, sorry, back over here, usually in any type of navigable waterway, just because navigable waterways have a lot more water that comes through the stream, but any type of navigable waterway usually the erosion on the bank, on the outer cut. And then if you want to go to the next slide, the footside of that is the accretion on the inner side. That's why if you live on, on the inside of a bend right here, over time, your land is going to increase naturally. If you're on the opposite side, if you live on the outside of a bend, over time, unless you do something to armor the bank, your land is likely going to decrease. Once again, we're talking about hundreds of years, except in the photos we just showed you, sometimes it can very quickly, especially if there's a flooding event. Ah, in this petition. So this is petition to vacate the right-of-way. Obviously, I don't represent the petitioners, and I represent the city, but this is a petition to vacate the right-of-way. What's important to note, if you want to go to the next slide, there's two pieces to this. There's partial one and partial two, and these I just made up. Partial two is that portion of the right-of-way. That was not impacted by the flood event, it had no, I mean, let me correct that. It was impacted by the flood event, but it was still there, identifiable partial to land before and after the event happened. But I know that this is a partial, or a portion of the event, or, I'm sorry, a portion of the request to vacate. That I don't have a legal opinion on, I mean, I have a lot of opinions on, but that one is just a simple motion or petition to vacate a right-of-way.
And that's Lot Four?
Correct, yep, that's Lot Four. That portion that really is disgusting, or has a lot of discussion about it, is partial one. This portion right here, that's on the, to the east side of Lot Five, and that's the one that has a lot of impact when the flood happened. And then, so this is the only parcel, sorry, so there's the two parcels, parcel two and parcel one, and this is the only one I'm really going to discuss today. The reason for that, sorry, stop me if you have any questions. But the reason I'm not going to discuss partial two is because it's very straightforward, it's just a simple petition to vacate. That's entirely out of the discretion by the city council, that has a lot of facts, the planner already weighed in on that. But I will discuss partial one, because I think that is, because operation by law, there's a lot of impact on this, the repairing rights. So this is just, I made these boxes, they're very, I'm sorry, I made them, same word. So this is the state, once again, the active river channel is always owned by the state. And it should be noted, the active river channel in a, in navigable waterway is owned by the state outright, that's the surface rights and the subsurface rights, the mineral rights, the pore states, the fossil rights. And that's, we'll get to the case later, but that's the Burlington case. So just looking here, this is the city owned this, had this easement over it, and this was the landowner, this is prior to the flood. Want to go forward? And during the flood, I think that there's a lot of reference to go line by line, because what confuses everybody, and I see why, is that now this land out there looks very similar to before the flood, but if we look at it in timeframes, we can see what's happening. So as the flood was going on, it's eroding away, and the erosion, once again, is moving the, the actual landform, and so that the landform does not exist anymore. If there was, and the Supreme Court talked about this, if there's trees, if there's identifiable pieces of land, houses, things like that, if there's identifiable parcel of land before and after the flood, then it's not erosion, but if it's the ground moving away all the pieces of land, that's erosion. And then that changes ownership. So throughout the flood, the active riverbed moved this way, you can see that the ownership is now changing, the city's parcel is shrinking, and there's a good, we'll get to that in a bit. Sorry, I'm very excited about this. Yeah, stop me if you have any questions. So then, right after the flood, we have, the state has this large portion of active riverbed, there's water flowing through here, there's no longer landform up here, the state's parcel is completely washed away under work.
The state or the city?
The city.
The city's portion.
You were just testing us to see if we were paying attention.
Gotcha. The city's portion is completely washed away. Now, the interesting part, did you want to go to the next slide? Back one slide, sorry. And then for the, the interesting question, sorry, one more slide down. The interesting question, one more.
Go, yeah, the other direction, other.
Yeah, you're going to the wrong.
Yeah, go forward.
Ah, the here, the interesting question is, so this, the landform is gone, the city's land is all washed away, the active riverbed is the state, which is owned by the state of Montana. The interesting question is this piece, does the city still own an easement over the state land, over the active riverbed? That's the next slide. Answer is no. The state is the owner of all active riverbeds, and that's including, that's the Burlington Northern case, that's I did for. That includes the mineral rights, that includes, once again, pore spaces, that includes all the subsurface rights, as well as air rights. That is just, just a bright line. There was a large majority of the Supreme Court went this way, there was two defendants saying it was an arbitrary decision, but it is a bright-line rule that Montana Supreme Court has established, and it's still valid, and up to the United States Supreme Court, that the active riverbed is owned by the state of Montana free. There's a lot of reasons why they went that way, but that is, that is the law in Montana. And so, once again, I wanted to make a very good point of, these laws are in place when there's acts of God, erosion that happens. These laws are in place, not when people go out and with shovels and dig holes, or if somebody's trying to change the course of the river, that's a whole different topic. But this, these are in place when things have changed over time, flood, flooding event. So immediately after the flood, what we have is the state owns the active riverbed, it's held in trust by the state school trust lands, and we have the ownership up there, and the city's ownership is gone, it's been washed away. And the easement that's been over there is also gone, because it's been, it's gone because of the fact that this is the active riverbed of the state. And the state owns it, and that's the Burlington Northern case, the state owns it right there, not only the surface rights, but also the subsurface rights and the mineral states. And then now, after, after flood, so this is what, the landowner can always work, well, if you want to go back, sorry, I'm sorry, if you want to go back. So now the landowner owns here, and the state owns here. Now, the landowner can work with the state to fill in these active riverbeds, and that's an issue between the landowner and the state. That's where you get into permitting, in the string permitting, that's when you get into, the Army Corps of Engineers gets involved, the DNRC gets involved, and you get, that's what permits exist, because it's the state and the landowners talking to each other. Anybody who builds into a active riverbed, once again, an active navigable waterway, deals with the state, because the state is, is losing land and significant vegetation. Sometimes there's preparing factors to consider, for example, animal habitats, river streams, fish habitats, that's when you get into DQ issues, but that's the permitting process when landowners are building into the active riverbed, and that's owned by the, the landowner.
But once the Rock Creek went receded, and that's what happened, it's no longer a navigable riverbed, because there's no water there. So that's, that's what happened next, so.
Yes, and that's a fantastic point.
So I, I have a quick question, because I have a, a map here that shows that when it flooded, it didn't, the water didn't come all the way up onto the city's land.
That I don't know.
I, I.
It's right here.
I remember pictures of a garage hanging off a riverbank, which, the house attached to the garage wasn't there anymore.
Right, but yeah, but like, if you look at this, they are showing the flood came up like this, and this is the part.
But where's, is, is, on this picture, is there a diagram of the garage that was left?
That's the garage.
So that red line does not represent what really happened, because we know that house disappeared.
Right.
And it didn't go, it didn't go away because the land next to it went away.
And Tom, I don't know where he got these, I don't know how, how, yeah, I just don't know how he got these. How can you get a picture now of them?
Well, that's an aerial, basic aerial photo.
Yeah, and there were, doing a lot of.
You can get, and you can get, and you can get, go back with Google Earth and get snapshots of it.
Yeah, so like, we know his house was gone, and the garage was hanging.
Yeah.
So this isn't exactly.
That, that, to me, yeah, as I'm looking at that line, I know, we know the house was gone because the land that was used was gone.
Because also, if you look at this, and the city also built their street back.
So, so let's go back to the question. So if we go to the state lands, Mr. Butler, I believe what I hear you saying is, is two different entities had the option of reaching out to the state and basically extending their boundary by working with the state to get permits and push dirt back into what was now state lands. Is that a true statement?
That is correct. I mean, and so if we want to, if we look over here, this little tiny red spot, at least that's what's been declared to the city to have been removed by the flood, that red spot, and that's what comes back into this, been removed from the flood. And we don't have to, I guess, even talk about it, it's been removed all the way back here. The main portion is if the flood had removed the city's portion, which is this triangle, which is this triangular area. Now, if the city could have came in and built upon their stuff, the city would have owned it. That would be my, once again, that'd be my opinion, the city built from the city's property out, and the city would have gotten their land back. But my understanding is that the landowner is the one who built and filled the spot in. By the landowner building into the active channel, even though the channel receded, the landowner would be the one who would be the owner of that land. Fortunately, that's the land, not only the surface rights, but also the subsurface rights, the mineral rights, although we're in the middle of the city, and that's a whole different discussion, that may be mineral rights.
Now, you did say, though, that if after the flood, there was still vegetation on the land, that it didn't erode completely.
Correct. Correct.
Because we just have these pictures that were taken, like, pre-flood, during the flood, during the repair, and post-flood, and there is still vegetation there, and on what was the city's land.
And so why?
There's still trees and still vegetation there.
If the water, and that's a great point, if the water, when it came through, if it eroded away such that it's not identifiable, not just land, if it's identifiable parcel of land, then that would retain ownership. If it, if it eroded away, and there's a hole such that there's not identifiable land, then it does not retain ownership. Ownership passes.
So if there's a standalone island of dirt, the ownership is retained?
Yes.
If there's a tree poking up from two feet underwater, is ownership retained?
Not usually. It needs, I mean, usually, what you need is like a house that the water did not erode down.
Well, then, when you just have bare land, I mean, with trees on it, and the trees are still there after the water recedes, isn't that an identifiable piece of land still?
Could be. I mean, it absolutely could be. One of the issues is, if you have a tree, and I know, I mean, this is.
These are lots of trees.
These are fact-specific questions, too. These are not the law questions. And that's a great question, because if you have a tree, and the roots got eroded away, then the ownership passed. If you have a tree or a home that did not get eroded away, ownership didn't pass. It's that simple. My understanding, once again, this is not, once again, I wasn't there, but my understanding is that this parcel of land got eroded away such that the, the, the building and improvement that was on this land fell into the water. If that is true, my opinion would be that it's sufficient that it's ownership passed, because the owners, the improvements that were on the land were eroded away, they fell into the water.
So would it be the whole parcel, or just the part that got eroded?
The part that got eroded.
Okay.
And that's why this part is not, I'm not even talking about this parcel, which is part of the petition for vacating Daly Avenue. It's just a portion that, according to what I understand, and by what I understand is a portion that was provided to the city by the, not the survey company, the survey company provided this red line, what, what's eroded away.
So, Mr. Dennison, is it, my understanding, I always like to play the game in my mind of what happens if this goes to court. Based on that certificate of survey that they provided, it is your opinion that if this were to go in front of a judge, the likelihood would be that all of that within that red survey area would deemed as no longer, that, that it, that it transitioned through ownership to the state?
Likely, extremely likely. The reason for it is, the pictures that I've seen, and speaking with the individuals that were there, the pictures I've seen is the home that was there having then collapsed, and that's very good evidence, that this portion was eroded to the extent that it started to impact this building, this structure, which we've seen, far inward from what the city's land was. Once again, we're not talking about this land, because everything I've found, or everything I've seen, is saying that this portion of this land was not touched by the flood. The land just, the flood eroded this portion of the city's land, which is this small red triangle out here.
And, and I, I will add at this point, that, so this was where, when I had originally reached out to the city attorney, I was informed that there wasn't a discussion, that, that it had gone to the state and it was, and it was no longer city land. The challenge that I was uncomfortable with was, 50 years from now, what is the paper trail that indicates what happened and where that went? Which is why, when I said, what is the normal mechanism this would go through, it would go through a right-of-way request. And at that point, what I understood is, there's two portions, one part, in your opinion, there's not a discussion over, the other part is an arbitrary, and the council can do what the council chooses or wants to, but you felt there was one part that you were driven by law. Is that a fair restatement?
Correct. I mean, everything that I've talked, or that I've reviewed, and, once again, this has not gone to court. As I keep saying, this is likely, but it's likely what happens is that when this city's land that was right here washed out, that city land then became the state land, which then became the landowner's land. Once again, the city, the individual, citizens can still walk around doing the low watermark and the high watermark. I mean, that's not an issue, and that's not something that anybody can stop. But once again, the portion that was the city's is like a gun at this point, it's just been washed out by the flood.
Do you know where the high watermark is on that map?
Not on this, it's not on this map. The high watermark?
Changed, obviously. I think Cooper.
And the high watermark does change, and it's always whatever the high watermark is. But when you go to any type of navigable waterway, you can usually see, because if you go, there is a portion where the plants grow, and then there's usually a rocky portion, and then there's water. Where the plants stop growing is usually the high watermark, generally speaking, and then you'll see where the water is. Low watermark, there's a little complicated form on the low watermark.
Are there additional slides?
I don't know. I, no, there's not, there's not. And then these are, I have additional slides, sorry, I just want to go back up, I have additional slides.
But did we already, we already, the DNRC already determined the, the navigability, so I don't think we need to waste time on that. I'm sorry.
No, I just have additional slides.
On that discussion. Can, can we flip on the lights for the council and see their, their stuff? So I will keep order here. This is discussion, this is discussion at the table at this point. Councilmember Daniels, I'm going to start on your side, just kind of go around. Do you have comments or questions?
Yeah, I don't know where to start. Start from where.
Councilmember Colleen Lee.
Um, no, I think that you answered the question that I had, which was, two homes that, if once it's rebuilt, I guess it doesn't matter who rebuilds it necessarily.
If it was ever rebuilding from their land, okay, sorry.
From the adjacent owners.
Correct, the adjacent owners.
It's the anchor point that it was built from.
Correct.
Mayor members of the council.
So, um.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Thank you. So I, I do see where Tom got this, because during the flood, he has an aerial view of when it flooded. And the water came in, and it impacted the house from the west, and it pushed up into the house off its foundation, and then they lost it on its own way. But according to what he's looking at here, you can see how it goes here like this, and this, this greenery is all still there. It never went away. And that's where, and he just transposes over here like this. So what he's saying, then, you know, the house may have been so damaged from the floodwaters that it came off its foundation and was lost, but the greenery never left.
I think what I understood earlier, and I, and I understand the question from a vegetation, you had said if there's an identifiable landmark, and you had said vegetation counts, and then I said if the tree, if the top of the tree is there, but the bottom is two feet underwater, who owns it? State or the previous owner?
So, mayor members of the council, what you're talking about is questions of fact, but not questions of law. That's a fantastic question. To get to the bottom of these answers, you either, you have to go with the information that's available, or there is experts that can be determined that do this exact type of work, geomorphologists. That's what they do. That's the exact questions that you're asking, is fact-specific questions. The information that the city has is based upon the survey company doing the red line version of what was washed out, based upon individuals who were there, and then also coupled with the fact that the house fell in, based on it was eroded away. So based upon the fact that I have, it would suggest that the city has lost ownership. And I keep saying suggested, because, I mean, that is the answer to the question that would go to trial. But, that's a, that's a great question.
So councilmember Ronnie, your point is that the survey.
But he has an aerial view?
Yeah, yeah.
So your, your point is that there's a difference between the survey company and the red line that Tom Colley provided on his map?
Yeah, for his, his flooding, and then the fact that the vegetation is all still there.
And if, if it's determined by the city council, if it's determined that the, ah, if it's determined that you would think, in your guest's opinion, that the landform is identifiable before and after the flood, that equals, and the law says, and the ownership did not change hands. However, based upon the facts that I see, likely that it did. And once again, the petition, the petition to vacate Daly Avenue is not a bad tool to encapsulate this. It's not the only method that the city has. The city has multiple items that they could use, but that is a method to encapsulate this, if they wanted to.
Councilmember Ronnie, anything else? We'll, we'll come back around.
Yeah, no, that's fine, go ahead.
Councilmember Tupin?
Yeah, um, I'm curious, so if they built it out, and I'm under the impression that there was some repair put in, some shore up that was put in, and then they came in and built, but someone else put that shore up there?
That's a fantastic question.
During the repair, yeah, you can see where there's water behind.
Someone that started the build, and then they went through and finished the build. Is there a timeline of when a owner has that ability to come in and recover their space?
That is, mayor, members of the city council, that's a fantastic question. Recover, I think, is a miss no more. Because everybody has said, or at least I've heard this, you know, we're just filling in our land, we're just recovering our land, we're just doing this. That doesn't exist under the law. Under the law, there is no right to recover. The land is gone. Once it eroded away, you lost your land. And there's no timeframe, there's no, I have certain timeframe when I can just fill the stuff back in. That's why when things erode away, especially in navigable waterways, you have to get permits. You have to go through the process of getting DEQ approval, you have to get DNRC approval, you have to get the Army Corps of Engineers. That is kind of one of the issues that led to a large debacle with a construction company about right after the flood. Because right after the flood, there was a lot of homeowners and construction companies coming in and doing work in the active riverbed.
Well, it was an emergency, it was under a state of emergency, so they had, I mean, they were able to do a lot more than they normally would be able to do.
Correct.
With that, I mean, they could do a lot of stuff without those long drawn-out permit processes.
No, there's, there's one I'm thinking of.
Okay.
There's one I'm thinking of that didn't get the emergency approval, didn't get the, because.
Who, do you, do you know who put that in? The initial?
I don't, I don't.
Do you, are you aware of who did the permitting for the land that has been redeposited?
I believe it's the landowners. I don't quote them, I'm pretty sure it's the landowners.
They're getting a nod from the landowner.
But once, whoever starts that process is irrelevant. It's the, whatever adjacent landowner is filling in land into the active riverbed, or into the riverbed itself, that's who gains ownership.
With, with the blessing of the state?
With the blessing of the state.
Or, so if I.
Or even without the blessing of the state.
So if I own, if I own an adjacent bank, and I decide I want a fishing pile, I just go out and I add dirt, I'm increasing the size of my property. If I do it without a permit, I'm risking getting yelled at by the state.
And they will move, they'll probably try to put you in jail, you're getting a lot of fines. That's trust house. That's why people get permits from the state, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and the DEQ, and the DNRC, because it's their, their land, their ownership and their water rights, or their water area.
So, I, I just, the, the property to the south that marks on there, because that one was completely flooded, did that go to the state as well?
Nobody has asked me to make a determination on that, or look into that.
I mean, did it?
It looks like there's a little piece of that left.
I've not looked into that.
I mean, it's all still there now.
And they're not asking us for.
No, I know, I'm just wondering, I mean, if they had gone in and.
They couldn't, if, if it had completely wiped out, that lot, and there was not a corner pen or anything left, then they would lose it, period.
All right, councilmember Tupin, we work to you as our, in our go-around. Do you have any additional questions for our city attorney?
Um, yeah, I guess I'm just not overly, with the permit, and I guess this is more of a, have you seen the permit?
The, the one in this case?
Yeah.
No, I have not.
Okay. And with that permit, would it require that survey that was done?
The permitting process, depends what they did, whether they did the emergency permitting process, long drawn-out one, and some of them did both.
Do we, do you have knowledge of what initiated the survey?
Yes, I do. So what initiated the survey is, to get any type of determination by the city, once again, this is a determination from the city council, to do any type of determination by the city council concerning what was washed out, first you have to determine what was washed out. And that's what the survey, the survey with the red dots, that's what they got from the survey company, if I understand.
So that, that survey was a request by the city to say what got washed out?
No, it was a request by the homeowner.
It was a request by the homeowner to the survey company to know exactly what got washed out.
Okay. And then that's what they used when they were reaching out to the state for permits, et cetera?
No, that was done later. What they, what they used to get the permit process, I believe, is something different.
Okay. And we'll ask that later, you're not required to answer for them.
No, you go, the survey process with the red dots, that was done far later. They had already worked it with the survey company, and then the survey company kind of added that in on what was washed out.
With the maps that you drew up, did you receive those from the state?
Which ones?
The ones that you drew with the state line, with the washout and the new land, and, or did you just create those based off of what you thought?
Which, which kind? I'm so sorry.
So the maps that said this is now state ownership, did you draw those maps or did you receive them from the state?
I.
My understanding is you said you drew those maps.
Yeah, the ones that.
Based on your interpretation of the law.
The ones that looked hand-drawn, that is 100% me.
Not to scale, not to.
Not to scale, and, once again, I'll put the disclaimer, that is just, once again, that is most likely according to the facts that I have at this point in time, but not a formal declaration, if that makes sense.
That, that's the playing, if this goes in front of a judge game, what side are we likely to end up on? Councilmember Keith.
Uh, my question is, so the Campbells owned that property, the river washed it away, and then the state owned it, and then it just reverted back to them once they filled it in?
And once again, if I may, mayor, members of the city council, that's a great question. And once again, reverted back is not a term I would use, or, once again, people don't have a right to reclaim what was theirs. My, the term I would use is that it was state land, and then whoever filled into the state land with the proper permits from the state, that's between them and the state. And if they, and my understanding is that they filled it in, that would be their land.
So if, if the city then filled in their part of the land, it would, they would be in the same situation.
Because there was no city land.
The, the city could have filled in from the north anchor, rather than the property owner filling in from the west anchor, then it would be city land, not reclaiming, but because it became ours, because we worked with the permitting and the state to get it. And it's not a reclaim, it's just, it's ours now. Reclaim is like there's a previous right to it.
Right, well, okay, maybe.
Is that, did I, did I capture that properly?
Yeah. And even now, if I may, even now, oh, can you go one more down? Yeah, even now, the city, any repairing owner can say, I would like to increase my, like, internally, this is the internal dialogue, I would like to increase my ownership and land, or my landform. They can go to the state, and if the state gives them permission, they can build into the river channels, and they, the, the adjacent landowner has effectively increased the size of their land by building into the active river channels. Will the state and the federal government, the Army Corps of Engineers allow that? Usually they don't, and that's why people don't just build into the river channels. And that's why they don't, or they can't.
But could the city do that in the section that was lost by the flood?
The city could have.
Could have, but not anymore.
Well, I mean, my understanding is that, I want to go one more down, I'm sorry.
We, we can't do it now because somebody beat us to it?
Yeah, something keeps going down. I understand, oh, no, the other's down.
The other direction.
I have one more down.
Go forward.
Um, one more down, one more down. Okay, so yeah, my understanding is, right now, if this is the state of the ownership, and I believe that it is, the city could always petition to come in here, and this is the active river channel, the city could always petition to the state to say, we would like to increase our, our ownership. The city could always petition to the state to say, we would like to increase our, our ownership. We can, we would like to build into this repairing ownership. The state's not going to allow that, Bill. The state's not going to allow people, even the city, to build into the active river channels usually.
Probably not a good idea anyway.
Yeah, there's a lot of reasons. That's why they have all the permitting process. But that is, technically, that would be ownership of the state, for the city.
Councilmember Miller?
I, I thought this was a very educational process. I appreciate all the effort you put into it.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm, I'm good.
All right. Um, if it is all right with the council, what I would like to do for a moment, you're, you, you may sit down, but please don't leave yet.
Can, can I ask you one more question?
Oh, yeah, please.
Um, so what you're saying is the part that was washed away is basically done by lot five, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, but lot four is still city land. And they're asking for us to abandon all of it, not just.
That is correct. That's my understanding of this.
I just wanted to clarify that.
There's those two portions. And once again, the city is not obligated to grant this. This is just what's happening in the background concerning.
Now, when you say that for clarification, are you saying the city is not obligated to grant the portion next to four? Or you're saying any of it or all of it?
Either one. The city doesn't have to grant the petition to either one. The petition is likely a very good idea concerning this portion because it, it would memorialize what took place during the flood. Um, truth be told, a thousand years from now, nobody's going to remember this erosion taking place and what happened. So it would probably be a very good idea to memorialize this piece, sorry, I don't know if you can go to the very top. Very, very top.
I don't.
This one, down, down, down. Sorry, down. I am lying, I lie so much.
We're going to get you a clicker.
Right here, yes. I have, I have a very quick one today. So you, it would be my recommendation to do something with this piece. Um, specifically probably to, my recommendation would be to approve the vacating of this portion. Not because you're actually vacating it, but it's to memorializing what took place.
Because we don't really own it anymore.
That would be my recommendation. This portion, that has nothing to.
You, you don't care what we do. You have not an opinion.
What we talked about today, that's 100% that's absolutely within the city council discretion.
All right. If it pleases the council, what I'd like to do is have the applicants present. Um, I, I have a question from the public.
Um, actually, could I speak real quick? I'd probably be technically a staff because I can answer some of the questions of what.
I can, I can, I can do that. Come, please, please stand up and state your expert witnesses.
Hey, Mayor Campbell, I'm honestly a champion of West Engineering. And during the whole thing, I was standing there next to Jim Bushnell as we tried to address everything going on. And with the Campbells, we've visited many times. And I'm going to use Dennis's slide. Lonnie, if you can go down.
Lonnie, you don't have to go up or down.
Keep going to the one where they pushed it back out.
Right there?
No, one more down.
Couple more.
There.
There, that one. So there were some questions. I haven't seen the pictures that Tom put together.
Yeah.
But about the, the triangle and the dike. So what happened is Cooper and Ninth washed out. They took out the sewer, it took out the water, the fire hydrant was sticking out in the middle of the creek, which now I don't know if we still got that land or not at the Fire Hydrant Council. I remember they washed out the gas main and it was starting to threaten coming around and getting to the transformer station.
Yes.
So under the emergency core permit to protect critical infrastructure, we went in and we put in that emergency dike to stop further erosion.
So that was the city that did that?
The city did that.
Okay.
And they, but we brought that dike up and we tied it into the corner where the Campbells had already filled in. We came from Cooper and Ninth and to that, about right there, and tied into what they had filled in. And there for a while, there was that triangle with the little trout pond behind it.
Yep.
And so we went through and we got all the proper permitting through the Fish Wildlife, DEQ, Core to go back and after we got the sewer reinstated, the water put back and to fill that in. And the city filled that whole triangle.
Okay.
And the one piece where there's a little triangle lot.
Yeah.
That got washed away.
Yep.
Which I did, and they have to give you an opinion after I watched his presentation because it got washed away. We had a memorandum of understanding with that homeowner. We took excess soil from the stormwater project and finished filling it all in. Um, instead of hauling it away. So the city filled that triangle in above to the south of the Campbells. So that's.
Yeah, and so we did fill in that little triangle though where, where it was.
South of the bridge.
No, the north.
North of the bridge, it doesn't exist yet.
North of the bridge adjacent to the Campbells.
And then the property owner directly south of Ninth, Little White House where their debt kind of fell in. They got the permitting and they filled in their part there to where their house was about to fall in.
Right.
And put the debt back. But we did everything ninth, that intersection to put the water in the sewer back. And then they kind of put the gas main back and then we filled in everything up to the fill that the Campbells had already done on their own with their own permitting. So that, the city did the triangle part. So I, I heard that question from a couple of councilmembers, so does that make more sense?
Right, so the city did the initial bank, uh, putting the bank in.
We put the emergency dike in, as we called it, just to stop further erosion.
Right.
But that was already after they'd lost their home and they filled in their portion before we filled in the triangle.
So the triangle was that, what had been city land then?
No.
Part of it had been the right of way for Ninth and Cooper.
Okay.
And then that little triangle lot.
Okay.
It was south of the Campbells.
Right.
The city filled that in too.
Okay.
And Courtney worked with them when she was here as the planner and got, uh, written permission, she's in California or something.
Yeah, they're obviously.
That we could fill that in. But now there's Dennis's presentation, you guys may actually own that now. I don't know.
Because you guys filled it in.
That's what I was.
And you're in, and we're a joint property owner.
Nine is.
The city permits, the city fills it in.
The city fills it in.
The city fills it out.
Because we have to, we had to put the water and sewer back together and protect it. And then we were worried about it treason to, a couple cars.
Can, can you show on this map exactly where it was filled in?
He's talking about.
Approximately, I probably can't show you exactly.
About this right here, this lot.
Well, this one right here, um, this third one right here is an aerial view of it after, right after the dike was built. Um, this, this third one also.
Right. So it's a little bit of the dike itself.
I know, oh, here, he's got a better one, pointed out from the city. Mine was my old pointer, it doesn't work very well.
The Ninth in dot matrix?
Yeah, I know, right?
So you can see the dike extends and then it doesn't go all the way to where they filled in. But that's right there is the emergency material that we had hauled in for this.
Okay.
Working with the city, the city did it. I helped.
Okay.
To protect further erosion of Cooper and Ninth because it was continuing to wash away the water mains and the sewer. And there was a gas main just hanging out of the side of the bank, so.
Right, and so did we fill in part of that pond then there?
So we got the emergency dike in.
Right.
Then the Campbells filled their land back in.
Okay.
And then after art permits were in place, we filled in the rest of the triangle, everything south of the Campbells property. The city, when I say we, I mean the city, we were working with the state.
No, I know, no, we filled in our city land.
Am I facilitating or letting this run rampant?
So does the Campbell's.
Does the city now own then the Hughes property?
I, I think that's a different discussion for later with Dennis, but I didn't think so, but.
The Hughes property was gone and the city just filled it in.
Which is the same thing that the Campbells did, right?
Yeah.
Their property was gone.
Yeah, technically, I'm afraid that would be the triangle.
That would be a later.
I know, it depends on what our, I'm, it depends on what our.
Did I try to wrangle your exuberance right here?
Did, so you guys have any other questions for me? I don't want to keep this forever, but I did want to give you the background on the repair that the city did. But everything we filled in was south of the Campbells property.
Okay, okay.
If you would, please stick around for a cross, it would be appreciated.
I'm just trying to get it clear.
All right. And I'm just doing my darn to fill, to facilitate the conversation for the public. Um, Campbell's, Nick, would you like to come and have a few minutes?
Do you mind if I share my screen?
Not at all.
There we go. Long as it's not your email.
No, we won't do emails.
And then full screen to, is, is the window that's showing up right now in conversation on your machine or the other machine? That we can minimize that.
There you go.
So is, is. And this for council's reference, I believe you guys have these slides in, uh, this is the double sided couple of slides. A couple of slides that match these slides.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Do I have control of it or do you have control?
You have.
You, you have.
You should have control.
It's not on this slide.
This was the two per, those these.
Yes.
Okay, so yes, and it's eight slides over.
One, two.
Yeah, but yours, yep. All right, Nick, or the box.
Renee.
The box.
I understand how this works.
Yes, I'm Renee Campbell. I'm one of the petitioners for, um, vacating or preventing the abandonment of Daley Avenue. So this is the other portion that does the adjacent to lot four that I'm going to be referencing in this talk. Um, I want to thank the city council and Mayor Westwood for the opportunity to speak this evening. Since the city council's last meeting on April 30th, I have considered comments made by city council and the public not to abandon this area of Daley Avenue for Rock Creek public trail development and lack of Rock Creek access. I will address those concerns this evening. One of the public comments made, it would be nice to have a place to sit by the creek and have a picnic. Currently in Red Lodge, Finn Park, Rotary Park, Hole Miners Park, and the least of else Creekside Park all have Rock Creek access, trail access, and all the Creekside have picnic tables. Having public access to trails and other outdoor activities is something we are in favor of when it doesn't have a detrimental effect on the environment and Rock Creek. The section of Daley Avenue adjacent to our property that we are petitioning to abandon is a narrow strip of riparian zone consisting of several varieties of trees, both conifer and deciduous bushes and grasses that have been there for many years. Next slide. This vegetation provides stabilization to Rock Creek bank, reduces floodwater velocity, provides habitats for birds, fish, and other wildlife, provides filtration from pollutants and exosodiment during floodwater runoff, and shields the creek from summer and winter temperature extremes. Some of this area is too narrow to place a trail without encroaching into the stream bed and all of the area would need to be clear cut of all existing vegetation to make room for any safe and navigable trail. Removing this vegetation will leave a devastating impact by destabilizing the bank, increasing the probability for future bank erosion and flooding and disrupting wildlife and fish habitats. In the 20 years that we have owned the property adjacent to Daley Avenue, we have witnessed this area as a migratory corridor for deer and moose. Migratory corridors are essential to animal survival due to access to young spring grasses and water. Removing vegetation and access to this area for trail development leads to habitat fragmentation by creating a physical barrier leading to herd disruption and decline. There comes a time when we as citizens of Red Lodge need to examine our motives for the innate desire for wanting more and the impact those desires have on our fragile environment. Next slide. I'm sure we can all remember what happened June of 2022. The flood had a major impact on the city of Red Lodge and its citizens, for some life-changing. Directly across the creek, DEQ's East Bench Cold Lake Restoration Project last fall involved planting over 500 millet trees to provide bank stabilization for this area, proving the importance of redeveloping lots of riparian vegetation. Montana Code 75-7-102, the Natural Stream Bed and Land Preservation Act of 1975 states. It is the policy of the state of Montana that if natural rivers and streams and the lands and property immediately adjacent to them within the state are to be protected and preserved, to be available in their natural or existing state, and to prohibit unauthorized projects and in so doing, to keep soil erosion and sedimentation to a minimum. Except, as may be necessary and appropriate after due consideration of all factors involved. Given that we are increasingly faced with the impacts of climate change, it is neither necessary or appropriate to remove essential riparian vegetation in order to put in a small, short trail. I will add, most of the riparian property upstream on Rock Creek is privately owned and many portions of Daley Avenue along Rock Creek have either eroded away or have been abandoned over the years. As city council votes in favor of our petition to abandon this portion of Daley Avenue, we are committed to working with Carbon County Conservation District and other agencies at our own expense to maintain and revegetate this vital area. However, if the city council votes against our petition, we will do everything in our power to protect this area that is so important to the health and stability of Rock Creek, wildlife, the Red Lodge community, and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yes, I would, if I could, please, address the city council. First off, I would like to thank esteemed city council members, Mayor Westwood, City Attorney, Edison Butler, and committee, committed community supporters here today and online for the opportunity to speak with you folks tonight. Almost two years ago, my, my family was hit by a Mack truck in the form of a flood that destroyed our home here in Red Lodge, a home that had been built by family and friends and in which for 17 years we had enjoyed the wonderful community of Red Lodge. During that time, we raised two children. So I'm going to show you a few slides. I know there's a little bit of confusion on what is there and what isn't there. If, hopefully these will help a little bit. So if you look at this slide right here, this is the Ninth Street Bridge right here. Okay, right here, here's Rock Creek. As it flowed before the flood. This is our property right here. Next slide, please, Renee. Approximately, this is our boundary on our, on our lot. I drew that in. That's not, that's not a survey or something at all. But it just gives you an idea of what we owned at that point in time. This area right here is the triangle that you folks are referring to, Lot Six, which was a neighbor of ours that owned that, that piece right there. And as you can see, the creek is flowing in here underneath the bridge and there's a lot more vegetation through this area. There's really a corridor of vegetation all the way through on both sides. So to your point, councilwoman, that, that is accurate. Those, those trees have all, are all gone now. If you move to the next slide, Renee. That's completely wiped out. Ninth Street Bridge is gone. Of course, our house is gone. I apologize, even two years later, I'm going to stumble through this a little bit because it's really difficult. Our garage is still there, thankfully, obviously good, but, um, this area right in here, and if we could have gotten a better picture back up in here, this whole bank over here was eroded dramatically back into many of the property owners through that area. And the gentleman here basically had his house leaning over the edge and luckily he saved his. Ours, ours, of course, fell in. Um, it shows the dramatic impact it had on that particular piece of property. And councilwoman, you're right, there is a tree right there on that corner that remained. But there is no vegetation in here. There was a 20-foot hole in here. That's what always eroded. So, um, next slide, please, Renee. So I'll have you back up one slide, please. We'll, we'll stop there. So two weeks ago, we were hit by another Mack truck in this very room and we were sideswiped by members of the community when they attacked our petition to vacate property adjacent to us near Rock Creek. The same feelings of despair and frustration engulfed us as they did two years ago. But guess what? I could have driven that same truck because our family have always been advocates for trails in this community. Over 50 years we've been here. We all hike, hunt, fish, and enjoy the outdoors. My parents moved, my brothers and I to Montana in 1970s. And we almost settled in Red Lodge before getting a house and billings. My brother John taught at the high school in Red Lodge in the mid 70s and still owns a house in Washoe. My niece and her husband lived in Luther. She worked at the hospital here. She worked at the hospital here in town. I work with veterinarians and ranchers in the area, and we continue to ski and relish this area to this day. So when we were painted as trail haters and trying to take away the ability to form trails, it was a petty and completely false accusation. We were both deeply hurt by it. I said we could have driven that Mack truck for the creation of trails sitting right next to the BRTA and trail users that were here last week or two weeks ago. But I put the brakes on when I see an attempt to run over personal property rights, and when those same advocates of trails talk of blazing a trail up the banks of Rock Creek and town, I get out of the truck completely. All of the property owners on the west bank of Rock Creek between 8th and 10th lost significant personal property to the flood. Next slide, please, Renee. This is looking up the bank from our property, and this is the erosion that I was talking about here. All of this bank was taken away. These people are basically sitting on the edge of the creek, as are these. All of that land eroded back over onto their property. Does it look like there's a place for a trail there? This gentleman had a chance to fill back in where he had his property before, so he has a little bit of a bank there, but not much. So when we look to the south of our property, there's no Daley Avenue, there's no right-of-way, there's no possibility of a trail unless you trample the existing property owner's rights and forge a trail through their backyard. There are 18 lots on the west side of Rock Creek between 9th and 13th. 13 of these butt up to private property coming from the east side. Look at your Montana Cadastro if you don't believe me, and I think Renee made some copies of that in case you want to look at it. 13 of those butt up to the private property on the east side. There's no place to put a trail. I would like to say, yes, there is. Two years ago, floodwaters eroded half our property, basically Lot 5 that you see on there, and destroyed our beautiful home aside from a handful of cherished friends. No attempt was made by volunteers to save our home or the contents within. There was a lot going on in town. I don't blame anybody for that. I don't blame anybody, because I'm just thankful no one lost their lives. We lost everything, but thanks to God, no one was killed or injured. We count our blessings and 17 years of cherished memories. During the flood, we were forced to tear down our house for fear that it might break free, as Mayor Westwood said, it was hanging by the actual electrical cables from the garage that might break free and flow to the power lines that cross the creek at the 8th Street Power Station, cutting off power to Red Lodge and the surrounding area. In fact, our house saved the transfer station by taking the full impact of floodwaters diverted by an abandoned bridge abutment and the poorly constructed, poorly engineered Ninth Street Bridge just upstream from our home. Next slide, please, Renee. So this is the flat map, or the map that you folks have here, and again, this whole area disappeared, and everything on it. Yes, this piece still exists, but this part is gone. In the end, we had to restore our land and the land adjacent to the east and west of Lot 5, all done lawfully with the proper permitting. I might add to Edison's discussion is that it wasn't four or five agencies, I think it's a total of seven agencies. There are amazing hurdles. I spent hours, literally hours and days up here, going through all of the different regulation to make sure that permitting was done properly. I have copies, I don't have a copy, I have one copy of it, I can make copies for the City Council of that permitting if you so desire. It's thick. So I spent a lot of time with Courtney on that, too. She helped me immensely. She was very supportive of us in helping us get that done, so thankfully, we had some help there. But it was a long, drawn-out process, a very difficult process. We have not received any insurance money or help from PMA. Both Renee and I love Red Lodge and plan to rebuild a new life here in retirement. Nearly six months ago, we approached the city on doing just that. Based on Montana law, we were told that we now legally own the portion to the east of Lot 5 that we paid to fill back in. The city's attorney, acting on the city's behalf, provided that guidance. That is the foundation on which we petition the city for abandonment of a street that hasn't existed for almost 100 years, that we have maintained for almost 20 years, that completely washed away, leaving a 20-foot hole, and we paid to refill. And it's not to build on, we're not trying to move up on the creek at all. It is allow us, it's just allow us to center our new home on the property, just encroaching three foot on the five-foot setback, and only three feet of that setback, and that's just the patio overhang. So currently, there's access to Rock Creek right next to us, right here, 50 feet away. People can walk in right here, where the bridge was out. That's to the south. To the north of us is 250 feet to Creekside Park. There's also streamside access along our entire property, as been mentioned before, due to the Montana Anglers Access Law. All I have to do is walk over here, and I can walk up and down the creek. During our entire time living in Red Lodge, we have never, ever denied anyone access to the creek. In fact, we as fellow anglers enjoy seeing others fish on the creek. You all probably received a letter from the city about the proposed upgrade to the storm sewer system, which will add approximately $120 per lot to each property owner's tax bill. I have listened to the last three City Council meetings and the other expenditures that have been requested, including EMS service taxes and possible addition of police officers, which will add to the property owner's tax burden. Increases are imminent. With the loss of the Rocky Fork Inn and possible loss of Eagle's Nest tax revenue, the city will be facing even more sharp falls in revenues. Let's be realistic, there will always be increasing expenditures as Red Lodge grows. Of all the petitions that come before City Council asking for more money, our petition in contrast will actually add revenue to the city coffers by increasing tax revenues and by avoiding additional maintenance fees for at best 150-foot dead-end trail. Because as we go down this trail, if you decide there's a trail there, there's a foot right there left. Currently in Red Lodge, there are many, many trails, miles of trails in town. Just minutes outside the city limits, there are hundreds of miles of trails. There are costs associated with maintaining trails, and at some point, the good folks of Red Lodge will be asked to put the bill. You've got, you're going to have a new park on the south end of town, it's going to be wonderful, I think it's going to be beautiful, but somebody's going to have to maintain that. So I'm asking you not to be selfish. Let's not be selfish humans who want to invade a natural wildlife corridor. Over the years, we've watched deer, moose, bear, and their young make their way safely up and down the creek, right next to our place. Do you think these animals will still have a safe and unhindered sanctuary if we put a path right down their main trail through Red Lodge? Other cities are talking about building bridges over highways to get animals from one part to the next, to the natural corridor. It always has been, we've watched it for years. City Council members, please consider these five areas as you decide on our petition for abandonment. Revenues versus expenditures, we're providing revenues, critical wildlife corridors, erosion of the banks, and the impact that could have on Rock Creek if we cut down trees along the creek, and the precedence that other properties along Creek, along Rock Creek have been abandoned by the city. The fact that almost everything we've heard tonight is opinions, except the Montana laws that have been stated. The law clearly states that this property is ours, and you have an obligation to follow that law. So in summary, we don't want your sympathy anymore. For the first time in 20 years, we're asking for your help. Approve this petition so we can move forward on protecting the streambanks and building our new home. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You might stand there for just a moment.
Not at all.
Just a reminder to the public that we will allow a time for public comment, but what I'd like to do right now, and just to mix it up a little bit, I'm going to start over on your end, Councilmember Miller. Do you have any questions for the petitioners that you'd like to ask?
Again, I appreciate the time you spent, the research you spent, and it's very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keith?
No, I don't, thank you for your information.
Councilmember Tupin?
Come back.
I can come back. Councilmember Ronnie?
No, I don't, I appreciate your slide, Ben, your comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Conley?
Thank you, Nick, I think that you answered all my questions before. I asked them.
Thank you. Appreciate that, sir. Councilmember Daniels?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Again, deeply sorry for your loss and everything that we endured. So yeah, I, yeah, you've answered quite a bit, thank you.
I'm going to offer two cents as just part of the conversation. The part that jumped out at me, and again, my questions, as I had reached out to the city attorney and kind of said, you know, if this goes to court someday, what's the likelihood of how it's going to yield or what the results are? The part that kind of really jumps out to me in the presentation today, aside from the ownership issues, which I think are fairly, like I said, I track when the attorney says there's part of this that is to the council's discretion, and it is my understanding that that portion actually addresses the setback issues and the concerns with just that half that was why they were going through the process. In talking with planning, it was recommended that they do the whole thing, but this council certainly has the objective of modifying that. But the part that really jumped out to me, and particularly when you look at the spots of that trail that we know are only a foot wide, is, it was referenced earlier, is the policy of the state of Montana that its natural rivers and streams and the lands and property immediately adjacent to them within the state are to be protected and preserved, to be available at their natural or existing state, to prohibit unauthorized projects. And the reality is that, A, what we had previously to the flood was a right-of-way or a partial right-of-way for a road, which in reality could never exist because there's not enough land to do a road, and the parts of the land there were even, one of the questions that I had posed to the attorney is, if we have a right-of-way for a road, does that equal a right-of-way for a trail? And the response I got was no. But when I look at this, it also says you can't do it without damaging that thin strip of ecosystem that's holding the creek there. So that's my two cents of observation beyond the legal sides is, we really are trying to protect wildlife, we really are trying to protect our natural resources, and the state has given us some guidelines as to what we have to do to protect that. Now I'm coming back, please, because you said come back.
I guess my only question isn't necessarily for you, it would probably be more for planning or for Denison. So if we were to get rid of the right-of-way of the road, does it also get rid of the road, like, does the property now get distributed to the owners? Is that correct?
I will, I will let, I know the answer, but since our legal counsel's here, I will let legal counsel direct that.
Chair, I'm just the council. That is correct. Abandonment of this right-of-way is one vehicle that the city could use to just abandon this right-of-way. And once again, the abandoned right-of-way doesn't have to abandon the full right-of-way, it can be partial abandonment of different parcels. If the right-of-way is abandoned, then it reverts back to the owners, the adjacent owners.
And so we had a right-of-way that had property owners on both sides, and we abandon it, as has been done historically and as it existed in other parts in town? The city's right-of-way goes half and half to each adjacent? Was that the question?
Yeah.
Kind of there.
And then I do have another slide that was provided by planning that I think is also informative, not planning department, building department, I apologize.
Who's screen are we seeing right now?
You and ours, should be.
Yeah, you can go ahead and stop sharing. Is this the slide that you have a slide of, or is this a handout that the building inspector has?
This is the one that I provided.
And do you have it, or is it going to be a handout?
It's going to be a slide.
Okay. Oh, we have a slide, all right. The chair recognizes Building Inspector Brian Hannah.
So this is a survey of the plot. This is the section that Denison's referring to. This is the section that they're asking for. So this is the stuff that's washed out that, according to the state laws, goes to them. This is the section that they're petitioning. I just thought that that picture might show good.
And to be clear, we're actually petitioning for the, the petition is for the lower, is the part that the state said that's still there, just to memorial, to memorial, how did memorialize? There we go. I knew that was the word.
It's on record.
The petition is for both four and five. And if you remember back to my hand-drawn map where there's parcel one and parcel two, this is parcel one, which we're talking about, is highly likely based on Montana law that the ownership changed. It's been highly likely, I'll never say 100%. And then this portion is the portion of city-owned land that is just a simple petition to vacate that doesn't have any implications concerning riparian rights. Does that make sense? And so this is, should be, I want to say this is Lot 5.
Lot 4 is on the left. 5 is on the right.
Perfect. And so there is the two different, although it's one petition to vacate, and I keep hammering this, there's two different things to consider.
Yeah. So the water is, the water is up by the legal discretion.
So the water is up on top in that picture. Councilmember Keith?
I have a question for the Campbells. Is there a difference in your mind between the row abandonment and getting a variance to build your house as you have it out here? What would be the difference in your mind?
I didn't quite hear if my hearing's kind of, do you hear the question? I repeat it, I apologize.
I'll repeat it, I'll speak up.
Go ahead.
I have a soft voice. Is there a difference in your mind between having the city abandon Daley Avenue versus you getting a variance to build your house?
Yes, sir, it's a major difference. This is the property that we're talking about here, up here. We encroach on our land, we encroach where our house would be, 60 to 10-foot variance. There's not enough land up here to give a variance that would allow us to build without you taking part of our land back. So variance is different than a.
Is that, are you asking if we want a variance, or are you asking if you want to give you a variance? A variance there would not be granted.
So, hold on, if I may. I'd like to ask our building inspector to come up, because just based on the question that came up last time, if I may say, can you tell me if I'm actually recapturing it? If the objective or the primary driver here was to be able to build this house in this footprint, are there two mechanisms that are equal in value that accomplish the same task, one being a right-of-way, the other being a variance? Is that a fair recapture?
Yes, and your voice is much louder.
Brian, your speech.
So we've had conversations with, they can make this work, they can make the house work. So variance really isn't on the table. A variance is more that, if they can't make it work because of a hardship, for some reason that it's impossible, will create an extended cost to them, that's when a variance comes in. So something like this wouldn't, a variance, to me, wouldn't really fall in the table.
This currently doesn't have any issues on setback, how this looks right here. If we don't abandon it.
So this is the section Denison's referring to state, right? So if this is not, the only thing that it does is their covered patio, right in this corner. So if they, if they don't cover the patio, shift the house, whatever, they can still build this house. This is just kind of a representation for me, so I can see what's going on. But I want to put this up here just so it's clear that this is the section that Denison was referring to as far as the state law. So to me, a variance wouldn't, this wouldn't be applicable for a variance because there is no hardship, there's no extenuating circumstances, so I probably wouldn't even bring that to the table, right?
And part of your concern in our earlier discussions was precedence of. And, and part of your concern in our earlier discussions was precedence of a variance and, and, and.
Yeah.
The, the repeatable and, and justifiable, yeah, I guess just repeatable logic of that goes into it.
Yep.
And question for the Campbells. The permits have been done with the state.
You've had them with the state and all of the agencies required for us to get those permits.
Okay, perfect. So to follow on that question, have you been to the county at this point to re-record any sort of legal descriptions, or I guess it wouldn't really change that?
The county directed them to the city for a right-of-way abandonment.
Of course it is. And only good, then, yeah. We wouldn't be here if we didn't have to. Yeah, that's fair. Okay.
All right, last pass through the, the table before I open up for public comment. And by the way, thank you, everyone, for the respectful conversation up to this point. I will open this up for public comment in a moment. But again, please, I, I know this is a passionate issue for everybody, but let's continue the professionalism and respectful conversation. So going around with, with Councilmember Daniels, anything else before we go to public comment?
Yeah, I'm, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, this is, this turned into a far more challenging decision than I ever anticipated. Dennison's presentation and then what you've supplied, it's definitely helped me out on the decision, but it's still, yeah, no question, sorry.
Sure, and, and we will come back to the council, or to the table again after public comment. Councilmember Conley?
I know that Daly has been abandoned all along the creek and the city limits already. I, I think that this is a smart thing to do. They obviously own Daly, the old Daly Avenue on Lot Five already. On Lot Six, that corner property, it either is gonna be owned by the city of Red Lodge because Red Lodge rebuilt it, or you're gonna have to make some arrangements with the previous owners. But I'm, I'm fine with making a decision at this point.
Councilmember Ronnie?
Um, you know, I guess my only question that kind of comes up still is the fact that the city put in the initial berm, and we stopped Rock Creek from continuing to flood there. So, you know, I just, I just see that as, you know, we did make that first step to protect that property.
But we were also protecting the city, based on what he said.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with that.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, that we did that, you know, as part of our emergency repairs also, you know, we, we did, it's not like we just ignored it and said, go ahead and fill it in, you know, necessarily.
But didn't he say that the berm stopped?
No.
The Campbell's property?
No, the berm went all along the creek there.
All along.
Right, is that correct?
I can't say specifically where the, the emergency dikes the berm ended.
Yeah.
But the fill, the picture that Nick had, you can see a very distinct line because they brought in really nice three-quarter inch gravel when they did their fill, and we used native soil that we dug up on the storm.
Right.
And you can see a distinct line where we filled in and where they filled in.
We did the berm all along here.
But the berm tied into what was left.
Right.
We just went to what had not washed away.
At, at this time, given the time, I would, I would entertain a motion from council to extend the meeting to 8:30, as I seriously doubt we will be able to wrap up adequately by 8 o'clock.
I, I would move to extend the meeting till 8:30.
I'll second that, yes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Conley and a second from Councilmember Tupin to extend the meeting at 8:00. Let's do, is there any discussion? Quick roll call to make it official.
Conley?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Yeah.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yep.
Ronnie?
Yes, Tupin?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Tupin? Any comments at the table before we go to public comment?
No, I think a lot of the questions have been answered, and, yeah, I think that's, my only concern is, I don't necessarily like giving away portions that don't need to go away. So specifically, I think about the, the Daly Avenue one off of four. And I know that not super useful for a trail or anything along those lines, but with us having that park there that can come down, now that could be a walkway down into that nice riverbed area. I, I'm sorry?
Um, shall we stand up there? Can I?
You can say.
Okay. I know that you're gonna, so you wanna extend a pathway from Creekside to the portion that exists until Lot Four. You're gonna run into the same issue of having to remove trees and, and lots of trees, so it's still a repair and issue, removing vegetation in order to put it to trail. And there is a portion in there that there's probably a foot that's left of Daly Avenue. So in order to put in a trail, are you gonna go into the creek bank? You're gonna be dealing with a lot more agencies and entities than you can ever imagine.
Yeah, let's, let's keep from, so, okay, are, are we done? For, for, for comment at this point?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Keith?
Um, I have a comment about, you know, potential trails. I think that there might be a misconception that, you know, we have the power to build a trail on the river, which we don't. But I think that when the people who spoke about potential trails last week were thinking long-term, because once you get something up, it is gone forever. And so I think that was just a, you know, way of protection, protecting what we might do in the future. So my other, my other concern is that what kind of precedent do we set by abandoning this? Are there other homeowners and landowners along the river that are gonna now expect that because we have done this?
Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Well, just a comment on your last one. Every, every situation's different. This doesn't set a precedent for nothing going forward. I mean, how many times do you have a flood? You hope that was it. So my point is, I don't think that this can be compared or extrapolated out like this is gonna cost us in the future. I don't, I don't believe that. I, I think we've discussed this enough, I think we've taken everybody's time. We've got, I thought it was excellent commentary, research, and I, I respect that. I, I appreciate that, and I think it's time to move forward.
All right. Before we do that, however, what I'm gonna do is I am gonna open this for public comment. I will start in the room first. Again, if you state your name, this part will be limited to three minutes. This is not open discussion or debate. This is an opportunity for the public to make comment and, and offer input. Please address your comments to me, the chair, and I'll go ahead and open it at this point in time. So I'll start with, that was public comment opening. I'll start with anyone in the room who'd like to speak. Please step up to the podium, state your name, and thank you for your patience and your participation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My name's Thomas Clark, I live on Blue Bell Avenue in Red Lodge. I apologize, I'm a little nervous with public speaking. So I'm here just as an individual and as a board member for BRTA. First and foremost, I apologize to the Campbells if we construed them as anti-trail. They clearly live here, for the reasons we all live here. So, um, I have a few issues. I think Councilmember Tupin, Councilmember Keith, you touched on this. If this land gets given away, that, any opportunity there is gone. And if there's any opportunity for the city to reclaim lands there, you know, it'll longer have a continuous, contiguous section between a potential park at Ninth Ave and a potential park at Creekside Park. So I just, you know, I think that should be considered. You know, the assertion that if you've volunteered with us or seen the work we do, BRTA does not tend to clear cut trees to build trails. I could envision a trail through that property that matches the nature of the trail extending off the power junction or the power station, you know, it's a single-track trail, narrow, and may have required some tree removal, if likely didn't. Pathable, it's enjoyable. I could envision a trail that provides access to the creek that connects to that. So, you know, I would love to see the Campbells build their house, too. If there's any other way to do it, like, that'd be great. Like, obviously, they had a huge loss, they deserve to be able to use their land, so we shouldn't shut their land down. It sounds like variance may not be possible, I mean, if there are design changes that are possible, if we didn't, we're, it sounds like we're talking about three feet of patio because the portion of the house is in question. That means there could be some compromise there. Let's see, well, the only other, one other thing I had to point was just on the petition to vacate this, does this area to be discontinued provide access to a water body or a stream? It says the area does not provide access to a water body or stream. If we're looking at that right-of-way that's adjacent to parcel four, it's adjacent to a water body or stream, so I have a harder time understanding how it doesn't provide access, I suppose. So, yeah, so my apologies to the Campbells. If we construed them as anti-trail, they clearly support trails. They're clearly here to, they want to promote the environment in that section. If you, you know, vacate this right-of-way, they clearly expressed they will protect that environment. If they sell that land to future landowners, they may not have that same protection. So, uh, just consider, it's a big decision, I'd love to see them build their house, but it could be opportunities lost with this decision.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, any other, any other questions within the room, or any other public comment within the room before I go to online? Please state your name.
Brian Hannah, live in Lutheran, Montana. I would just ask that, when this whole picture is looked at, that it's looked at in two places, part that Dennison spoke to that involves the state root laws, and then the part that they're asking to vacate. Please know that there's a difference in those lines.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments in the room? Your honor, would it be a possible?
Sorry to belabor the point. My name's Chuck Wyman, 208 Cooper, so I'm the adjacent lots to the Campbells. And I, I understand you're probably ready to move forward on this, I just, of course, need to say a couple things. The, the first thing is, is the Campbells did put the land back. They brought it back to the riprap, which is what the city put in, my understanding, and speaking with a FEMA officer who came down and looked at that riprap, was that that is only temporary and prior to any permanency, it needs to be removed. Now, I don't have any proof tonight to be able to offer you that, but I can tell you that was a conversation I had, because I was sort of surprised that we'd have to come in. That was done under an emergency permit, and apparently FEMA doesn't allow emergency permit stuff to stay. A permanent permit needs to happen. Also, having been a permit, I also got a permit along the creek there to remove stuff that was illegally dumped there. So actually, I took on that, went through the entire process, through U.S. Corps and Soil Conservation and all that, so I'm very familiar with the permitting process, having done about two months worth of work to get it done. So I guess I'm looking at, they paid to put it all in there, it sounds like law-wise, that's a Supreme Court decision or has gone through, so that's pretty easy, based on the riprap that I believe you're talking, I'm trying not to make this a debate, I'm not debating it. It, it sounds like there is an argument that that needs to be removed prior to anything permanent. So I'm not sure that that even really would come into a decision based on this. The other thing I'm, that has come to mind is, is access. And, and I think that's incredibly important to everybody who lives in Montana. Some of them are from a ranch family, and we allowed access across our ranch and all of that, so the roots in Montana for access are pretty strong, at least from people who are natives and so forth. Access is granted at Ninth, that's on that riprap. Access is granted along the Daly portion that is behind Lot Six, which is the triangle land. Three of the board members came down, or council members came down and looked at the property and can tell you that there isn't any vegetation where they filled in. That vegetation was all gone. There's absolutely no question, and I can supply photos. I was actually at the flood, prior to the flooding, I came down on Sunday and was actually there when the bridge went drop-down and all of that, and I was there through the entire rebuilding process. So I, again, I'm not a attorney or anything like that, but what I say to you is the truth and where it is. So access for the riprap, which is not safe access, because that's a corner of the river as, as I believe has been shown in the photos, that is fast water most of the time. Now, the creek is coming up Daly, and so is that great access? No, in my opinion, but it is access. So access is granted there. Secondly, then, starting at Eighth and going all the way down to Seventh is a beautiful park, or at least land that the city owns to be a park. It's not truly maintained, in my opinion, and maybe the park or the trail people go through and clear the trail from time to time, but it is not, it is not maintained, no money's going into that. Two weeks ago, we had a question, am I going over my three minutes?
Yeah.
Is that where you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Chuck, and, and I've noted that I've had an additional to-do list added to my list, so.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from within the room?
Could I make just one quick comment?
Do, do you want to, in the interest of time, do you wanna make that comment now, or do you wanna wait till the end of public comment and then utilize the time then?
Until the end, yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll promise you a time at the end of public comment.
I'd want to, but.
All right, second call, or, or last call for the room? All right, let me go to online again, if you would bring your camera up, that, then I'll call if I see a camera come live. If I don't see an action there, then we'll go to an off mute and go accordingly. So this is for public comment online. Going twice. Going three times, and before I close public comment then, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment officially, and then offer the Campbells a chance for final remarks before bringing it back to the table.
I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things on the trail. Folks, I, I think what's really important to understand is that really is a wildlife corridor, and if we put a trail in there, you're gonna disrupt the animals that normally stay down there. And that's why I made mention of the many, many miles of trails we have in Red Lodge already. The other thing is, when we filled out our application for petition, we actually enlisted a prominent land attorney in Montana, and she told us, do not put that you have stream access in there, because that petition can actually be used against you in the future and future court documents. So that's why that was written up that way. I wasn't trying to, try to fool anybody by any means, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were clear on that. We have been completely transparent with everything we've done here today, and we can give you any more information you need. I appreciate the folks' time, very much, tonight.
All right, thank you. With that, I'm gonna bring it back to the table. I hope I have been successful in my role of facilitating public discussion on the matter. The main motion of resolution number 3649 is still on the table. Are there any follow-up motions to that? Councilmember Daniels?
That's a good one. Um, yeah. I would, I would actually like to move to make an amendment to resolution 3649 to Section One, where it says that the city council, the city of Red Lodge, hereby and forever permanently vacate a portion of Daly Avenue located east of Lot Four and Lot Five, to just say east of Lot Five, of Lot Forty-Five.
There is a motion to amend the first therefore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Daniels, a second by Councilmember Tupin, and just before proceeding, let me reach out to the Campbells and make sure we've identified the correct lot that is the critical lot for the building and that is in line with what the city attorney has outlined.
That is correct.
So it is Lot Five that we are keeping and Lot Four that we are getting away?
Nope, 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 nope.
Oh, Lot Four that we are keeping and Lot Five, did I mention I'm just like?
Or are you trying to, getting, let me just see what you're writing.
So keeping Lot Four, getting rid of Lot Five.
Okay, sorry, you're saying it weird. So we are giving out Lot Five, but we are keeping Four in the, sorry, you said it, I...
Okay, so, so, so which is being struck from, which, which is?
Lot Four is being struck.
Lot Four is being struck.
Oh, the one that was completely eroded away.
That's just parcel.
Which one was completely eroded away?
Five, five.
Five was completely, so we are striking from the first therefore, Lot Four, and referring only to Lot Five.
Correct.
Which is the part that addresses the part identified by the city attorney.
Correct. Correct.
Is that correct, Dennis?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, there is, there is a motion on the floor by Councilmember Daniels, a second by Councilmember Tupin. Is there any discussion?
I have a, a question I would like to clarify. Would, with that, if this passed, or it did pass, would, would the Campbells still be able to build their house there?
Not as designed.
Yes.
No.
If, if this doesn't pass, are you, are you talking about the motion as a modified version?
Right.
The modified version, as I understand it, allows them to build their home.[1790.91]
But if it does not pass, can they still build their home there?
Not without modification to their home.
Like moving it back three feet or...
Or, or rotating it or...
Not having it covered.
Yeah, they could not build their home as, as architected and built based on the understanding that the land was there, so.
The covered porch, so, thank you.
Additional discussion on the, on the amended...
Yeah, my, and my discussion to this, um, I know, I've been back there, and I've actually pulled up by the storage unit a couple times and kind of assessed the whole area. It is pretty wooded, like wooded area, but it is such a small area. And my concern has nothing to, to do with building a trail back there. I, I don't see the feasibility with how much space there is. My concern is, according to what Dennison said, that Lot 5 is not part of the city anymore. Like, it is pretty much...
It's already gone.
It's already gone. Right. Okay. Whereas Lot 4, um, just by his rationale, like, there's still trees, they're still there. I feel like we would be setting a precedent if we gave, vacated all of it for anybody on Rock Creek, regardless of if the, you know, if it was ruined by a flood or not, just to vacate. And, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. It does. Okay.
Councilmember Tupin?
Um, I also kind of have a similar mindset with that. Again, don't necessarily wanna be setting a precedent that we're giving away land, especially riverbed property, but more so going back to the preservation piece. I appreciate the fact that you guys recognize that, but again, decades down the road, someone else could buy it and be like, "Boy, I really would love to fish from my yard." And though the law says that they're not supposed to, that doesn't stop people. So I think this is a way for preservation in that regard. And again, I do agree with the single-track option as well. I do think that that area, and again, we can disagree on this, but I will say that rocky section right there in front of the house, like, that is a really lovely place to be. And I would like to see that we can still get access to it. And so that's my thought process with it. And for me, if you already got all the permits and all that, that to me says the state says it's yours. Otherwise, they wouldn't have given you those permits.
And I would just add that rivers change. There could be, it could move 20 to, I don't know how many feet in the other direction next time. And it's, that's, it's gone.
Right. Any, oh, I remember running on this.
I, I just, I, I'm glad we are approaching it this way, because I, I firmly believe in our Red Lodge growth policy, the comprehensive parks plan, the active transportation plan, that, um, and I don't even remember when these were all passed, but basically, a prior council, which I feel we should respect and respect these plans, was to not abandon public right-of-ways along Rock Creek for the exact reasons Chelsea has stated. Now, I do absolutely appreciate the fact, you know, that erosion did take away the city's land in that, in that one area. So I'm, I'm happy with this compromise, I think.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
I just think that what you're creating is coming off Ninth Street, you have that triangle of land that the city rebuilt, so that could be city-owned land, whatever. Then, this land is now the Campbells'. So there's no way a trail is ever gonna go in here, because it would dead-end up, up their land. So as far as trails go, the usability of this is silly. I mean, it's just silly. It's never gonna be used. So I personally would, would be voting, I, I'd just let them have 4 and 5, because we have no use for it now, nor in the future. If, the next time there's a flood, this could be next. I just don't see that because of this narrow strip, that it's ever going to be used, ever, by the city, ever. So all we're doing is creating kind of a dead end to nowhere. It's just silly.
Any other comment on the amendment?
I just clarify, though, that the amendment also needs to include in the heading of the resolution.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
All right. So, um, I think we can do that by expanding the amendment that the title needs to also strike 4, but keep 5?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Bearing no further discussion, let's have a motion. And just to clarify, this is a motion to amend resolution 3649 to drop the sections that refer to Lot 4 in the title and the first therefore, and to grant a right-of-way for Lot 5, which aligns with the portion that the city attorney describes as no longer being owned by the city. I'm just, I'm just restating it. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and do a vote. Lonnie, roll call please.
Conley? Yeah. Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Uh, yes.
Miller?
Yep.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
The amendment passes. With that, we will revert back to the original motion, which has now been amended. Is there any further discussion before we take a vote? Roll call, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
The motion passes in its amended form. Thank you all for your patience and your participation. I will entertain a motion regarding the readdressing project.
I make a motion to table the readdressing project.
I would second that.
There is a motion by Councilmember Tupin and a second first by Councilmember Ronnie to Ron, Ronnie.
Oh, did you? You can still comment on it. Oh, okay.
On, oh, then, yeah.
That's no longer on the agenda.
All right. That, that's, let's, let's, any discussion? Let's do a quick vote and make it official.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Tupin?
Yes.
All right. I, I apologize to council that we have eaten up the, the block of our time. What I would like to do is request a minimalistic approach. Is there anything that the public health, safety feels is absolutely essential to share with the council in anticipation of upcoming actions?
Not at this time.
All right. Admin and finance?
Not at this time.
All right. Land use and planning?
Not at this.
Wait, look at me.
That would be me. Um, not at this time.
Public Works.
Oh, let's get into it, now just...
Can we just say that we, when we talked in Public Works today, we had a discussion about why we wanted to table the readdressing project, because we wanna find out who's pushing for it and why, before we take a vote on it. Yep.
All right. Understood. Thank you. Is there any correspondence that has not been shared with the city clerk to be... By the way, all of the information provided tonight will be included in the packet next time.
I forward it to you.
Any other correspondence that we need to make aware of?
It'll be in there.
No, this one's like someone addressing me. I don't remember anymore, though.
All right. If you find that, please feel free to forward it on to the clerk of the council, also known as Steve Clark.
Yeah.
Also known as Steve Lonnie, and it'll be included. With that, I'm gonna open up our final section for public comment, which can be on anything, even if it was something that we talked about and you didn't get it, or we were hoping we were gonna talk about that you didn't get a chance to. I'll go ahead and open public comment. State your name.
Jen Cap, Adore Flats. And actually, I don't regret sitting through the meeting, because I learned a lot. And thank you for the presentation. Um, it's always a, be here, so no regrets there. As far as the, I will comment on the readdressing project, because one day I sat in to facilitate the Red Lodge Business Alliance meeting, and we approached this topic and, as a business member, and then listening to the comments of business members that have brick and mortar on, you know, streets east and west of Broadway. There are some serious concerns, and with our current challenges with deliveries and post office concerns and packages just not making it, it's really impacting businesses. So, so attempting to readdress an area in the midst of delivery confusion and challenges, it's just, maybe we can consider that, do it in a way that it's a gradual or... I mean, to do it like that, it could really, could really hinder some downtown businesses. We don't have brick and mortar, but I, I stand here representing those that do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments from the room on any item within the city's purview? All right. I'll go ahead and go to online. Any comments from the public online? Going twice. Going three times. I'll entertain the motion on item 13.
I move to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for the patience of all involved in your participation.
And thanks for the chocolate stand.
And then, Nancy, oh, no.